The first item is the minutes of the previous meeting. Are we all happy with the minutes of the previous meeting? And are you commenting on it?
Good.
Good. Qualities for the substitutes and substitutes, Emma?
We have apologies. Oh, sorry, I'm going to make a point to be, but don't have any apologies. Just apologies. Patricia Rice was coming.
Was coming as a substitute.
She suggested she was a substitute.
Okay. Any declarations of interest? No?
None.
Questions from members of the public? Have you received any?
None.
We'd like to welcome a couple of members of the public who've actually turned up. Which is very nice. We don't normally get many members to these meetings, so I believe they're from the campus. Campus groups, they're very welcome. We've decided to slightly change the order of the programme for a couple of reasons. One is that the Waverley, the feasibility study on the on the major centre, that needs to go to the end, near the end, because it will be held in exempt. So when we reach towards the end of the meeting, on the final item, we'll have to ask you to leave. So we're changing, number five will become mainly training services. Number six will become the update in the health and qualities group. Number seven's going to be the RAP programme. Number eight, the feasibility study. And that's it. Okay. So we're starting with number five. Waverley Training Services. It's over to Calvin.
Calvin and Adele.
Okay. Just to save you from hearing my voice all evening, councillors, we're fortunate to have the centre manager from Waverley Training Services here. So Adele will report you through the presentation. So I'll hand over to Adele, she can take it on here.
Good evening, councillors. As Calvin said, I'm Adele Sullivan. I'm the centre manager at Waverley Training Services. I've now been in post for almost a year and a half, actually. It's going by. Waverley Training Services forms part of the communities team and is within the remit of the head of service, Calvin. Waverley Training Services began over thirty years ago as a service to our local community to improve skills and vocational qualifications within the area. This later expanded into delivery of apprenticeships and privately funded vocational qualifications. Okay, so what we deliver ourselves.
What we call them.
Our direct delivery includes that of apprenticeships. We deliver apprenticeships in business administration, IT, supporting teachers in learning schools, customer service, debt collection, social media, and we were recently approved by AAT to deliver apprenticeships in accountancy. So this is quite a high need for accountancy apprentices in the area. So we were approached by AAT to deliver them. We also run a study programme, which is really what Waverley Training Services started as, as a support for young people who are aged between sixteen and nineteen, who don't want to stay at school, can't get into college, don't want to go to college, et cetera. So we help a lot of those learners who maybe didn't get the best academic grades. So we support them in English and maths to gain better grades and also with employability. The programme does include work experience and really it's a nine-month programme and we have a lot of success on our study programme. About eighty-five per cent of those young people go into a job or college or on an apprenticeship. So that's really our service to the community. We're also able to offer qualifications privately funded. These can include the diplomas in any of the vocational areas on which I mentioned earlier. We can also help adults with their English and maths, bring them up to a functional skills level two, which kind of would be equivalent to an O level GCSE in English and maths, because it is becoming a priority and there are lots of areas where people don't have those grades. So in order for them to progress, we can assist them in doing that as well. We're also the lead provider for three subcontractors who work across Surrey, Hampshire and the surrounding counties. And some of the areas that they deliver, I've just chose kind of the most obscure ones, are footwear. You can do an apprenticeship in footwear, sport and childcare. So we have the contract with the funding body and then we work with them and manage them to ensure they deliver that apprenticeship programme. For various reasons, they might not be capable of being their own individuals for five or six months.
Can I ask, Adele, would you like questions at the end or as per three?
Entirely up to you, I don't mind.
Okay.
Right, right.
Yeah, please.
How did the candidates refer to you? Are they put forward or are they suggested or do they come to college?
So we work with a lot of schools and also a lot of support agencies. So youth support workers. We actually work with Surrey County Council. Not only we deliver their apprenticeships for recruitment apprentices and also their current staff. Schools we have relationships with. The study programme, a lot of those come from youth support workers. Also, the National Apprenticeship Service has a website. So if I was a young person and I thought I want to do administration apprenticeship, I'd go onto their website and Waverley Training Services would pop up as a suggested provider.
Thank you. Could I ask about numbers of people, just to get an idea of the size of the amount?
We'll come on to that.
You're covering that later. Okay.
Could I also ask, please, bearing in mind you talk about accountancy, et cetera. We had site of an Ofsted report, which suggested that we weren't doing so well on getting people to A to C with maths and English. Has that been turned around now?
It has. That Ofsted inspection took place in October twenty sixteen and GCSEs were very new to the study programme, as part of our study programme. We don't direct deliver a GCSE within our study programme. It's one of our subcontractors. So last year, the achievement rate of A to C was one per cent. A lot of that had to do with attendance. Recently had the GCSE results in this year. And for English it's thirty point five per cent and for maths was thirteen. So English is way above the national average because GCSEs, they go to school for eleven years and then we literally have twelve months to get them to A to C. And maths is slightly below, because the national average for maths GCSE in that environment is actually at twenty per cent. So the last twelve months have been, as you've known, a lot of work and effort's gone into that. Great success on both of them, but we still need to increase maths. But definitely one per cent to thirteen per cent is significant.
And just so you know, it is somewhat of a blunt instrument as well, because Adele and the team and our subcontractors, you know, lots of learners will get better functional skills, i.e. they'll go from almost very low maths skills up to a level of quite a huge improvement, but not quite a GCSE. What the GCSE one, and correct me if I may get this wrong, is moving those that got a D
upwards.
Up to a C. So it's not all of the ones who didn't have a GCSE, it's getting them onto an A to C. And I think suffice to say, and this is where I'm learning a lot from Adele, it wasn't just Waverley Training Services that struggled with getting apprentices GCSE grade C maths and English. Because it's a huge challenge for these people that perhaps haven't had the best experiences at school to then say, oh, now you've got to get your maths in English.
Yes, I was going to say that. You're probably dealing with people who have problems anywhere, which is why they end up with you.
Exactly. Yes.
So you're starting from a very, very difficult place.
Yeah, so our other learners who didn't get anywhere near a D for GCSE, they would do what we call functional skills. And just going up one level is class as a success. And they're very high at Waverley Training Services. It's about eighty per cent for English and seventy-six for maths, just by going up a level. But they can be really low. Like Calvin said, the only ones doing GCSE had a D and we have to take them up to an A to C. So, and it is a challenge in eleven months, as you can imagine.
And I think our oversight, I think the learning we took from the Ofsted was our management of our subcontractor and monitoring their maths and English delivery, which is something that we, hence, we're very aware of what percentage of improvement we've had this year, what they need to work on, because we've, well, Adele's implemented very focused monthly meetings where we make sure GCSEs, attendance of classes through to, you know, how they're progressing is monitored very closely.
Close the door, don't make it. Functional skills, are those more hands-on rather than brains-on?
Yeah, definitely.
Because there must be an awful lot of children that are not able to comprehend high maths and English and they will never reach GCSE standards by any means. But invariably, they turn out to be very good heads-on people.
Absolutely.
And they're more, shall we say, practically applied rather than mathematically applied.
Exactly, so functional skills.
So we cover those as well.
They would be more working maths and English, because a lot of the answers will say, well, I want to be a mechanic, so I don't need to do English and maths. So when you have your own business, who's going to do the invoicing and, you know, all of that? So it's very what you're going to use every day, because that's what they need, as opposed to everything you learn at school that you may not necessarily use after the age of sixteen.
Well, the best bookmakers couldn't do maths as a proof of GCSE standard.
Could I just say the last one? Does it also therefore mean we need to sell ourselves better to the Ofsted when they come for reporting?
And I think, Chair, I think Adele and the team with Kelvin's support have taken the service on a long way since that last inspection.
Yeah. When are we expecting the next inspection to be?
So.
I've just about covered that.
The positive part about the grades that we got in our Ofsted inspection is that we get what we call support and challenge visits. So we were inspected, we had a support and challenge visit in July. We're having another one in December. And I kind of expressed to our support and challenge officer that ideally I'd like one about next October, because, you know, yes, we have come a long way, but we've only had one set of GCSE results since that last inspection. So he feels, now he basically feeds into Ofsted and says, I think you can stay away from Waverley Training Services for a couple of months. And there's a whole new range of providers. So I'm hoping, I mean, they can come really any time in the new year.
They don't give you much notice, do they?
No.
No, they give you two days' notice.
No, no, this is, oh, two days' notice.
Because they used to give you three weeks. It was maybe a little bit too much notice, so it's two days now.
Is that because of the poor rating or was that because?
Normal.
I thought that.
Everybody gets two.
All right, I thought that if you really, if schools really excel, they have less inspections than those that struggle.
They get less inspections. So once you go into the grade twos and ones, you should go on a three-year rotas minimum. Ofsted are quite behind. Everybody gets the same amount of notice except for childcare providers, you know, as in the childminders. And they can turn up on the doorstep for that. So our two days, we're more than happy with.
It is quite interesting, because Waverley Training Services has generally always been around the grade three because of the learners we work with. But prior to the administration before this, that was satisfactory. They changed the grading and said, organisations shouldn't be satisfactory, they should all be good. So they changed three to required improvement. So suddenly, you know, even though we may have even stayed the same or even improved, the sort of message is, actually, you should be good. So it's been really beneficial in the sense that we've got the support and challenge from Ofsted, but it was, yeah, it's a bit of a, it hurts, yeah. And we're working our best and the hardest.
And they moved the goalposts.
It's just, yeah, and you could see where they were coming from, to be a good, you should be good.
And I think we all aspire, at least, to be a good going forward and that's what we're working towards and made really good progress with it. Can I just say, Chair, sorry, Chair, I visited Waverley Training Services and now I've just realised it was ten years ago. And I have got a bit of a soft spot for you guys, because I think that you are doing a fantastic job. And having struggled with learning difficulties in my life, young people do have a hard time. And what you're doing is equipping their lives and I really do employ you. I think that's fantastic. And keep going and I will be paying a visit soon, because I must, I must visit you soon.
Brilliant.
That's a good comment, Sam. In fact, there's criticism in the Ofsted report with the Times, plus.
Yes.
I really appreciate that.
But not taking enough interest and, I mean, and I don't think it does have a high enough profile in the Times, ought to be honest.
I think it's something we really want to be, and also forward. Link to the task and finish group on wellbeing. We know that we're lucky in Waverley in some respects, the skill levels for much of our population is very high. But we also know there are pockets of deprivation and some of that deprivation is defined by skill levels. Young people leaving school without qualifications, not work-ready. And if we don't equip them for work, there's a real danger that those young people end up getting, suffering from mental health issues, from becoming isolated, getting into criminal activity, committing antisocial behaviour and all that goes with it.
There's spirals, isn't there?
Definitely. So this is the best chance that some of those young people are ever going to get. And that's why I think we value the service as much as we do.
No, I don't think anyone disagrees with that. In fact, it's something that Waverley doesn't actually have to do. It's not one of our statutory responsibilities. It's such a very good thing we do. I think we honour Adele for this side.
Okay, so twenty seventeen has brought the biggest changes to the apprenticeship programme. I've been working with apprenticeships for twenty-five years and this has been the biggest year of change. And predominantly that's around the apprenticeship levy. Does anybody know what the apprenticeship levy is? Okay.
I don't think I should know. No, I'm just looking one point.
When you come to visit, I can tell you about it in more detail. So previously, all apprentices, irrelevant of the size of an organisation, were funded by the Skills Funding Agency. And from the first of May, any employer who has a wage bill over three million pounds has to pay an apprenticeship levy. Some people will call it another tax, some people won't, but it has to be paid. So the best thing for an employer to do with their levy, because naught point five per cent of anything over three million doesn't sound a lot, but actually, you know, can add up quite a lot. So this levy, to give you an example, one of our newest customers is Royal Surrey County Hospital. And their levy pot, their naught point five million on their wage bill, means that they have to recruit approximately ninety-six apprentices every twelve months. That's one organisation. So as you can imagine, this has been quite a shock to employers with a wage bill over three million pounds. And it's taken a little bit of time to embed. So in the first quarter of this year, because they started on May the first, the recruitment of apprentices was down by sixty-one per cent across the country. Because employers will, you know, have to do a lot more now. Or they lose that money and nobody wants to lose any money that they're having to pay. So as you can imagine, a lot of our new employers are all public sector organisations. So we've got a lot of the councils on board, most of them, Guildford Borough Council. We've worked with Surrey County Council for about ten years, Enterprise for Entercar, Royal Surrey County Hospital. On top of that, the public sector also has a target that they must meet, that two point three per cent of their workforce must be apprentices. So it's kind of doubled the pressure. So those that didn't employ apprentices to begin with, they've got two targets. They've got to spend their levy pot or they lose it if it's not been used in twenty-four months. I'm really pleased, because it has been a slow start, which we always anticipated, but we've actually got forty-six levy-paid apprentices on board. So the fact that nationally there's sixty-one per cent down, I'm really pleased with that. We have all but one local authority working with us now on apprenticeships. So we have to run it through that.
So we're somewhat uniquely placed, because we're the only local authority that has its own training arm that can deliver apprenticeships in Surrey certainly and actually the surrounding councils as well. So Adele and the team are really focusing on the public sector, delivery for the public sector in essence. So if you imagine Waverley's bill per annum is around seventy thousand, isn't it, Damien? So every year we're putting seventy thousand in the levy pot. So that equates, when it starts, well, here I go, three, four thousand per apprenticeship.
Yeah, it does vary. We currently go over something called standards, which are more expensive, but an accountancy apprentice on a standard would cost an employer nine thousand pounds of their levy pot.
So. I would have thought it would have been like not-for-profit sort of organisations that would have had to do it, not actual government, local governments.
It's any large, yeah, it's any large national, large company with that payroll, sort of wage bill. But we think that our best place, because there's lots of competitors around, but we're more uniquely placed to help our public sector sort of colleagues.
You think London Bridge, aren't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We also work with some small organisations and how that funding works is, previously, before May the first, that was free to them. They now have to make a ten per cent contribution. So using the accountancy example, up until April the thirtieth, that qualification was free. They now have to commit nine hundred pounds and they get the rest of the ninety per cent from the government. But still to SME, that's a lot of money to find to recruit apprentices. The really good thing is the employer levy can be used for your current workforce as well. So, you know, staff who want to upscale, we have lots of organisations who have managers who have done management qualifications, so are able to offer that as well.
Could you explain what this allowance is? I mean, half a per cent of three million is fifteen thousand, actually.
Yeah, that is.
So what does this allowance of fifteen to offset against the, what does that actually mean?
So suppose we have an allowance of fifteen thousand to offset against their levy payment.
So fifteen thousand of benefits?
Yeah.
That they can draw down.
I see, I see, okay.
But the money can only, and it can't be used, if you take on a new apprenticeship, it can't be used for wages, it has to go on the training. So like with our levy, finance, the payment to HMRC and then we draw it back down from the government into Waverley Training Services.
So does that mean this can help the National Health Service with their nursing training at the hospital?
Potentially in the future it could help care workers at the very early stages of somebody's work in the care profession. I don't think funding nurses.
Nurses generally operate above.
I think they're expected to, in most of these, it's gone to higher, thank you, used to be.
All of the apprenticeships we're delivering at Royal Surrey County Hospital are around administration and management. So here we have performance of twenty sixteen seventeen. The cohort refers to the number of learners and obviously the achievement of those. So you'll see that from fourteen fifteen into fifteen sixteen, and these are academic years, there was a slight drop in the success of twenty fifteen sixteen. This was due to the underperformance of one of our subcontractors whom we ceased working with the following year. The achievement rates for sixteen seventeen are all above the national average. So across the country for same type of provision, which is delivered by colleges and privately funded training providers. So you can see it's on the right way, in the right direction. Okay, so where are we at the end of October? We currently have with our subcontractors, two hundred and fifty apprentices on our programme, including the forty-six that are being paid for. And the number of study programme learners is five hundred and eight. This was the thirty-first of October.
Six.
I'm sorry, I was just, someone got glass.
Did I?
Yes. In fact, I know that has actually increased this month to five hundred and thirty, so.
Fantastic. So that, when you talk about numbers, so we do an X amount of those directly ourselves, but the rest is through our subcontractors, we need to maintain this quality level. So we're considered the lead by national funding agencies and trusted to making sure they achieve their grades. That's quite a considerable number.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you still doing this all from the?
This is where I'm going to say.
That's my move.
This is where I'm going to show my, not the pump house.
Yes.
We are. We are still at the pump house, yeah.
Because you weren't going to move.
Yeah. You'll have to be quick when you're visiting. Okay, so, yes, are there any further questions about accountancy?
It's like a large school, isn't it?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so twenty eighteen looks to be a very exciting and promising year. With the levy, it's now starting to take up this slump alone. We've had twenty-three of those levy paid for apprentices start. So as you can imagine, like I said, there was a slump and it's definitely on the up. This means that potentially we could quadruple the number of apprentices that we directly deliver ourselves, which is, you know, very exciting. We will have to increase our staff as well to deal with it. Our assessors, who work with our apprentices, tend to work on a thirty-eight cohort each, because they go to and deliver them in the workplace. Our numbers actually on our study programme this year, to the year-end in thirty-first of July twenty seventeen, is actually double in comparison to the year before. So the study programme does need additional support and this is because of raising the participation age. It's also exciting because we're going to move to Memorial Hall, very excited about. And it will be a nice new modern building, it will be conducive to learning, it won't be at the end of. Yeah, and get lots of phone calls saying, you don't exist, I've got to the end of the road. You're not there, I am. So we're really excited about the move. We will move in January twenty eighteen, so very exciting, but there's thirty years to pack up in a box and file. This will also mean that we'll have to have some new ways of working, because our assessors who go into the workplace will work a little bit more remotely. So we've kitted them out, so that in between their appointments at the beginning of the day, they will not have to travel. We work eight till four at the pump house, so they won't have to travel in rush hour. They can work from home, they go on to their appointments, which is much smarter than people sitting in cars in traffic.
True. So if you imagine we have a full-time equivalent of about, I think it's fifteen staff at WTS. So if you quadruple the number of learners, you know, we would, we need to be much smarter. Getting everyone into an office means for the ten minutes before they go out again, it's just nonsense. So we're just trying to get them into that training of, you can work from home and go direct to the work-based learning. That's the sort of challenge we've got.
How does the space compare that you've got in Memorial Hall as opposed to what you've got in the moment? Is it roughly the same or is it more of that?
No, it's probably directly for Waverley Training Services smaller, but what it gives you is the opportunity to link into the other areas, if you want to imagine.
It's also a more flexible space, because what you've got at the moment is awkward. So parts of the building are underutilised and so in a way it divides everything in one location with flexible.
We've got a wood, we lovingly call it the annex, which is one of our main sort of classroom. It's basically a shed.
Yeah, it's not energy efficient.
It is a wooden, it is a wooden, yeah, it's a wooden shed. And the pump house itself is not an unattractive building, to be fair. That's quite, not, it's just not quite that conducive to like a small school or it doesn't quite work. So we've filled spaces and that's the training that we've got to go through with our staff. It's like we have here, not everyone has a desk, because it's got to be, you know, work from home. Because even if we stayed, say, at the larger building, the pump house, we still wouldn't be able to house the thirty full-time equivalents that we're going to need in the next, hopefully.
So what would replace the classroom, the big shed? Where would that be replaced?
Oh, no, we have a main classroom there, it's a large classroom. Oh, yeah, yeah. So we over-deliver the study programme, exactly the same size as we got now.
At the Memorial Hall.
At the Memorial Hall. The big challenge is your apprenticeship levy people, so it's your assessors, the work-based learning group that need to get out to businesses, there's no students at the pump house for them, they're all out in the workplace.
I think it would be more focused, more easier for people to see, to know that you exist. It's easier, you know, to park and to drive to and, you know, it's closer to where people live as well. Especially near the chanteries and stuff like that, you know.
And a really, you know, nice, modern location, which makes people feel better, which makes the learning faster as well.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for your time this evening. Does anybody have any further questions?
Just a couple of things. I noticed in the objectives, one is to create a financially successful service. Does that imply that in some ways you're not currently financially successful anymore?
No, the objective, what we've always been up until now is basically around that sort of break-even, small surplus, small deficit sometimes. But what the levy provides us is with an opportunity to become, you know, hopefully contribute to the wider council services.
To become profitable, right?
Yeah, that's the objective, but what.
So it's not that you're losing money, you're just about breaking even.
Just about that, just about there. And what we don't want to be saying in any, that comes from our business plan, is being too carried away with ourselves, because it's a big change for us.
You're creating a new business plan, aren't you?
Yeah, absolutely, and that's on the programme we like to perhaps bring back to you. But it's, so we're just setting ourselves those targets of becoming financially stable with a view to contributing to the corporate machine. So we're just setting ourselves those targets of becoming financially stable with a view to contributing to the, yeah, corporate machine.
And Chairman, in, in some ways, it, it builds on the model we have in, in leisure. Where we have high quality services that are, that people want to participate in. Uh, but it doesn't cost us anything as a council to run because it covers all of its costs. The challenge for us, and Walter will know this, is that how do we take something like a business unit like this? With, and this one particularly because it operates not academic years, so not, not financial years, but academic years. And how do you meld that together with the council's financial planning process? So it's really tested us corporately around, you know, what we, how the budget works, what recharges happen to the budget. To kind of make sure that we set things up to support enterprises like this. That, you know, do fantastic work, but are, hopefully can fit in with the way the rest of the council operates as well.
Okay.
You'll, you'll see it in the budget processes you go through, that Adele and I have been ambitious and want to demonstrate that it, it can be commercially sound.
I think we should be trying to do a bit more to increase the awareness of the council. Get more involvement and perhaps there's a need for a website or something like that. Or even a part of the Waverley website, I don't know if you get any website capability, I've never noticed.
We do have a section on the way.
You do have it, I've actually noticed it to be, but that's my fault.
Wow, no comment.
Is that the alternative?
It's, it's, yeah.
It's been, it's been a while since I've, I've looked at it, but I think that, um, and there's a number of reasons why that might be. But I do, I, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we need to, we really do need to, um. Have a bit of a speech to all of the office, uh, to the, to the members and explain to them the purpose of, of wave training services. That they're there for their constituents as well. Um, I mean, I referred to, um, a young chap there a few years ago, um, he was a lodger at my parents' house. And he was nineteen, he, he needed some help and he went and he did quite well there. So I think it's, you know, it does, we need a bit of awareness for, for wave training services and I think they're great. Maybe a bit of a brand.
Yes.
Perhaps a bit of a brand change or something to just liven it up.
I think I'd be great.
You don't, I don't mean by liven it up, awareness, yeah.
No, I think we share, I, I think we share that, it's an exciting time, it's, you know, we're, we're losing this, this logo and moved. I think we do need to rebrand and become, and make most of our strengths.
And Chairman, one, one of the things that we've spoken about in other, this meetings of this, of this committee is. The, the understandable focus on older people that we had in, in Waverley, we have one of the largest older populations and increasingly. We're thinking about services kind of in a more joined up way. So we're thinking about sheltered housing units, we're thinking about care line. And we're seeing different services coming together and I think in a way, there would be value in thinking about younger people. And all the things that we do that support those young people who may be going through a more vulnerable point in their lives. Maybe aren't sure about the direction and thinking about all the things the council can do, but most importantly, what wave training services can do to help. And I think for members, that would make more sense. So if they come across young people who are in need of support, this can be one of the things that they're offered.
Indeed, indeed. Any other final comments, members? Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Adele, have a nice, excellent presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, ah, the, the, I've just been reminded that we should ask, we should be talking about whether we get any specific recommendation.
You can go on without.
Okay, right ahead to this discussion.
Chairman, it did sound like you wanted to say something about communicating.
Yeah.
The, the role of wavey training services to members more generally.
I think so, I think we should be recommending that, that, that you should be upping your internal PR if you like and.
Yes.
Is there any else that we've discussed that other members would wish to recommend? I think that's probably the end one.
Could I add one, one point just? Feel free to disagree, I'd be quite keen to look at, um, wavey training services in, in a year's time after. Or whenever they decide not to do it all, see, um, about the improvement measures that is taking place.
Would you, and I suppose the other option is whether you, would you be interested in seeing the business plan? That we are, to bring that forward.
Absolutely.
Before it goes through to executive.
When's it due to go to?
Oh, sh- well.
Come to the next meeting.
Come to the next meeting if you're, if you're interested.
Okay, yeah, but.
To show you the direction travel, keep on board your comments.
Good, we'll be looking at the watch programme, that's another agenda, so, yeah. Does that cover these two recommendations? Thank you, thanks so much for watching, thank you.
Yeah, very well done, thank you.
Yes.
The, the next item we're going to discuss is an update on the, the, the health inequalities treaty of the past and finish group. And just to remind members, particularly those who aren't on the group, the purpose of the thing is to look into the buyers, these health inequalities in, in the borough. And, and see what, what's part of that. Then we've actually had two, two meetings of the task group so far. And the first one was very much, um, came from Karen Simmons from Surrey, Surrey Social Services, or Surrey Public Health, rather, Social Services. And she actually gave us, it was really an expansion of the presentation she gave to this committee. Explaining the reasons for health inequalities, the fact that it comes down to lifestyle, environmental causes and financial causes. And there's lots, lots of good information, it's all available publicly on the, the Surrey, what's the place? Surrey Eye, so any of you who are interested and we can further into it. I've had a look at Surrey, there's a vast amount of information on this Surrey Eye system, so that, that was very worthwhile. The second session was more of an internal one where we had the, the presentations from Waverley officers covering first of all the planning side of things. And where planning should interface with the public health. And secondly, from the housing people, the housing, and the housing in this sense is the people who run our, our housing and look after people who need housing. And might even possibly be homeless and that sort of thing. And in terms of the, the first one, I think the big problem with, with, with the, the, the planning side of things. There's such pressure from the government right now to produce housing at all costs. And I, I knew this already, really, before we had this presentation from Graham Parsons as colleagues. That it's difficult for public health to get the right degree of look in actually, to, to, to the, to the, the policy. But I think we're, 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 what we're going to do out of this report, we're going to ultimately produce, just to raise awareness of all this. To everybody concerned. In terms of the second, in fact, I, I personally was very impressed actually with the, the people who came along from the health, the, the housing department, if you like. They, they're providing almost a, a social services capability, you know, covering first things that, that Surrey isn't always able to do. That they're, 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 they're doing the sort of thing that because there have been all these cutbacks at Surrey. Uh, there doesn't seem to be the right number of social services and care workers available to help people. So our housing people are going into all that and I was very impressed with their attitude and all they were doing towards it actually. So that's a brief summary, I don't know if anyone else who attended the meetings, is there any other than yourself and, myself and Alex who were there? Would you like to add in was to, that you were at the second meeting.
I was at the second meeting.
You're a holder for the first one. Damon was there of course as well.
I, I found it very interesting, as you did, and one of the aspects was the, um. Responsibility of councils when planning to build social housing. About being careful to be near what kind of amenities, I suggested perhaps they shouldn't be right next door to a burger bar kind of thing. Which wouldn't exactly help with a healthy lifestyle. Um, yes, it, it did.
Difficult to do.
Very difficult to do. Um, and particularly nowadays when we tend, hopefully as well, not to have enclaves of social housing. But have them mixed in with the general type. Um, yes, it's not easy.
And, and Chairman, just to, to build on that, it, 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 it did highlight, I think, that we do influence in a variety of different ways. Um, the health and wellbeing of our residents. Um, but no one thing in isolation solves it. It's the interactions, almost like seeing it as a system. And you require a number of factors working together to move things in the right direction. And that ultimately mixed communities, people of different ages, backgrounds, are for the strongest communities. Because they bring different strengths and skills. If everybody who worked in a certain area worked in London, it would mean during the day it would be empty and probably ripe for any person wanting to. To, 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 as somebody who was a burglar, to go around and, and stack some houses. So the fact that we have retired people and working age people and young families and older families living together is, is really healthy. But also having local jobs and having people like we've learnt with bravey training services who are skilled to access the jobs that are available. And jobs at every level, not just, you know, high level jobs, but jobs like the people who look after people's gardens. And provide some basic care work and work in the schools and, um, and who work in the local hospitals. And so it's that whole mix. And I think we're very lucky in Waverley because generally our population are healthy and they're relatively affluent. But it's a reminder that, um, things continue to evolve and to change and the council has a role to hopefully make things even better.
Absolutely.
And not allow things to fall the other way.
But there's also these pockets of deprivation amongst.
Yes.
The healthy population, yeah. The, 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 one other big learning for me, which Alex keeps emphasizing with this business, that only something like twenty percent of the health of the community. Is, is determined by what the NHS does. The other eighty percent is dependent by all the preventative type stuff.
Yes.
And encouraging people to have a healthy lifestyle, having the rights of housing and all, all that sort of thing. And the problem is that, 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 the politicians actually are responding to things that are very short term. Which is all the health service types of, because the preventative stuff doesn't actually come through the benefit for perhaps ten, fifteen years, sort of thing. So it's changing this mentality that we should be worrying about what we need to do to get ourselves re-elected and, and that's the thing, what happens over the next few years.
You're right, Chairman, the, um, one of the most important things for someone's wellbeing, if they are working age, is to have a job, a work, one job to do. And for older people who are trying to live into older age independently, it's having the appropriate housing and support to enable them to live in their own homes.
Yeah.
And the council Waverley has a big role in, in both those areas.
Yeah. I mean, the fact I think I'll say that Alex and his colleagues have done a great job in setting these things up. Because a lot of work involved in persuading people to come, we're talking about busy people who are dragging away from their everyday duties. But we're, we're achieving that, so well done to Alex and his colleagues for what they've done to set it all up.
Halfway through, so.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to make any recommendations or anything from?
I think there's a lot of information from.
Um, I think the only thing I'll add is to really echo what Damon was saying and, you know, as a officer here, I've learnt a lot in that. You know, I would never have thought joining this council, that eighty percent of what we do contributes to someone's health, I think it's massive. And I think things what we have got today, like wavey training services should not be underestimated on the impact it has on someone's health, I think.
Yeah.
Well, Chair, could I just ask if, how are the, uh, communication systems going now between the various services and, and find yourself? Are you getting cooperation? Because that's one of the biggest, uh, uppers in the world. Nobody's as pleased with the social services and the care services. I've seen we've been working independently and that's how things happen.
Without putting too much of a spin on it, um. It's, it's patchy in some places and some places it's better. It's been raised as an issue in some of the meetings you've had and it is probably going to be an area that the group are going to look at to make recommendations towards. Um, just in terms of timescales, we're going to try and finish this piece of work to try and report until the March meeting at the end of the cycle. So that would mean concluding all of the meetings in January and have a February to write up the report, which is going to be a hell of a month, so we'll report to it.
And Chairman, as part, as part of your consideration, are you having an opportunity to look at the work of, of the family support team?
Yeah, it was meant, Hugh mentioned that to me some time ago, um, and I kind of overlooked it because of how big the agenda was last time around. There's a lot of things that we could cover, one and two areas that we kind of need to look at, but I need to work out how to scope it in is one is dementia. And two is, yeah, what you just mentioned.
The advantage of the family support team is that it was a, it was a service that I set up when I first came here. And it is a really good example of multi-agency working, so the council has a big role, we have a, a team. But part of the team's job is to make sure the other agencies, which sometimes is the police, sometimes the social care, sometimes the health services. It could be the GP, it could be probation, it could be DWP in terms of Job Centre Plus, it could be other parts of the council. That those bits work in unison and almost hold those other agencies to account, to make sure that they're looking at the needs of the whole family. Not just one member of the family, but looking at them holistically. And they, they are very successful and they do much of the work that in the olden days or in other councils would be social care people or health people. And they're very talented and they do, they work with the most vulnerable families. Families who are at risk of having their children taken into care or entering the judicial system because of criminal activity. Um, lots of mental health issues involved and their job is, is to get the family back on their feet. So they're able to move forward under their own steam without being continually dependent on statutory services.
And they help with people with dementia as well, you know?
Well, it, because it's families, it's often young people with parents probably in their thirties or, or twenties, thirties and forties, so less so for that. But certainly, it's, it's an interesting model that you could adopt in other parts of the system. So for older people, it would also be quite a, a multi-agency approach.
Because my concern is that we are living in a borough which is of an older generation. Um, and, uh, dementia isn't just for elderly people.
True.
My, my father's sixty two and he has dementia and I don't see sixty two as old. So, um, it's, it's one of those things, you know, it's, I think we are doing so much for, so I know that if you go to the doc, if you've got a weight problem, you go to the doctors. They can sign you up for the gym down at Farmington Centre and that's fantastic. Um, uh, so, yeah, I, I would like to see more, for, for dementia, yes, definitely, absolutely.
It's worth mentioning, Chairman, obviously, we, we as a council, I think this piece of work should probably sort of form part of the sort of findings. But we have a health and wellbeing strategy with an action plan that exists at the moment. We have an aging well strategy that was adopted last year. And I think those are two documents that we really should be bringing back in to the lean. Yeah, view progress as against your finding as well from the piece of work. But we should also not dismiss the, the cultural strategy, which again, when you talk about dementia, there's a lot of work that goes on. Using singing for the brain, it goes on, the, the final maltings that we, that we help support, we offer.
And movement, dance.
Movement, dance, you know, in the cultural strategy, what we tried to do when that was brought forward is saying, look, this isn't about, because everyone has our fine art and. We talked about it to a greater, that is using different types of sort of services that can help people's health and wellbeing. And, and that's something that makes, I think, Waverley a, a special place. That sort of cultural sort of hub, so we've almost got in all of our towns, certainly far and very blessed. But Cranley, um, Hazemere and Gollumay all have that and we really try and maximise that through our voluntary sector and apartments, so.
On that topic, I'm glad you raised it because that was the last piece of work I did before I left Leicester.
Yeah.
Was looking at health, wellbeing and the arts and we have, we just, I would encourage anyone to go look at the report. We could almost replicate that if you wanted here.
Yeah, that's okay, Alex, yeah.
Well, it's particularly important because, because we know that social isolation for our older population particularly impacts on everybody. And how social isolation can sometimes, um, lead to progressive dementia symptoms. Because people, you know, they end up not being able to cope and not be, so what we're trying to do is redesign our services to better connect with those people. And give them activities to come together with other people to participate in, like singing for the brain and other, and other activities.
It's immediate help as well, yes, because, um, I don't want to keep using my father as an example. He, just randomly, he got a letter out of the blue to say he's no longer allowed to drive. No, no test, nothing to say he's not capable to drive. But there was nothing in place to say, well, actually you can have a bus pass, you can have this, age or disability. So I think, I know some of it's not Waverley's ring then, the travel is Surrey. But it's, it's connecting people, their residents, having a bit of a care, saying, we, we want to look after you. We do have a, a responsibility and I think that's, that's where I think Waverley is good at, but can do more.
I think it was definitely closer to the residents in Surrey actually. But, um, I mean, my, I thought that was a very useful discussion and I would, I would take on all the organisation. Just a final comment was that although we've got all this responsibility in a sense for public health. It's not our formal responsibility, it's formally Surrey's responsibility, the other people have got all the funding. We've got to try and, and bu- build this into all our, our programmes. We've got to try and build this into all our our programmes, that's what we've got to try and do. Okay, I think we should move on, unless there's any.
No, it's a good report.
Yeah, absolutely. The next, the next thing is the watch program, Alex is going to be doing this, take a few of the. The items which are listed in the in the documents that are circulated.
Thank you, Jen, um what we've done in the other ONS committees is pay a little bit more attention to the work programme before. Um because before we kind of skipped over, but what we're trying to do now is plan ahead a little bit on all of the committees, so we're going to look at. The items that are going to come up in January, hopefully officers can just help a little bit, give me a bit of guidance and ask the members. So both officers and members prepared as to what's coming up in the future. And you'll see on section eight, there's quite a lot coming up in January, um and it's up to the committee to really give an indication to both myself and officers as to what you look at. I would probably suggest around three to four items max at any one time, I think the agenda we've got today is very manageable, it's something that all the ONS committees could learn from. And the first item I want to talk about is the um Community Safety Partnership or Safe Waverley. And I believe in Calvin can help me out, that is a statutory responsibility for um our councils to look at. And I was indicated that January might be a good time, is that still the case?
I think it would be a good time, Alex, and if you, I don't know if you're going on to it, but that may be an ideal time to talk about the prevent.
Yeah.
Strategy as well, it seems logical, yeah, sorry, Alex, shut up.
No, no.
But yes, it's a statutory responsibility that the Community Safety Partnership should feed back to the council and January is a good time to get our partners in.
So we'll go back and we'll take that, some good, pretty good journey.
So, I was told you mentioned prevent, okay, um I looked on the exec board program, I agree to consider, I think, January time as well. And I believe you're putting a strategy and an action plan together.
Correct.
And how, is that still in draft format?
It's in draft format, but very close to um circulation now, it's more portfolio, so that's, we already have an action plan. Um but this is really sort of a review of our 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 responsibilities on the prevent um agenda. And I think it will impact on a much more focused action plan going forward.
All the members think, does anyone want to add that to the January meeting?
Well, it's certainly a thing at the national level that's got a very high profile. I sort of wondered also, obviously to some extent, maybe I'm wrong about this, but how big a problem is this really in Waverley?
Well, and I think that's a a common misconception now, and I think one of the things that comes out with prevent is the radicalisation online and.
So you think it could be a problem?
Yeah, I'm not here saying there's a, there's a, there's threats of radicalisation.
I'm, you can't really monitor it really, in lots of ways.
But you need to be, we need to be aware of of what of what people are susceptible to potential radicalisation and it is just as apparent.
Did the training quite recently, Jen, actually, for prevent, and it's very um, it takes, I think, an hour or so to do online.
Okay.
Um yeah, something like that, and and very interesting, really does open your eyes. Um especially someone who has worked with terrorists in my professional career.
Yeah.
Um you does, you do learn something from it and I I think it's absolutely a priority because you do not know, that's one of the things.
Terrorism seems to be generally from bombs and high tents after running people over in bodies and stuff, that can happen anywhere, I can tell.
Another challenge, Jen, is that because so much of that radicalisation happens through online sources. It could be an individual in complete isolation in their own home, within their parents' home, and their parents aren't even aware.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, and I think Waverley Training Center, as as an example, make a major contribution in making sure our young people. Don't aren't vulnerable to that kind of radicalisation.
It's all not, it's all not just one type of radicalisation, it can be on the extreme right wing side as well.
And I think that's where it was just part of the council, we all, we all go down sort of Islam or this, actually, there's lots of different.
Lots of different aspects, so we should have that on the agenda as well, to finish on the ball, then. You want to take this on, on Alex, the next one?
Yeah, um the next one was a result of the um scrutiny uh task group on the. Leisure Centre Contract Management Review, which happened in, which was presented to the executive in July. So it's quite common practice in scrutiny to review a scrutiny report in six months' time to monitor the recommendations made. And it depends whether the committee and officers feel that the six months has been an adequate time to actually assess it or whether they want to. Look at it a bit later when you say welcome and you want to come and some observations on.
The problem is none of us were involved with it, you know, their exercise, so we've got a complete lack of knowledge and understanding of what went on before.
Um if I was, I I don't know what priorities you have as you go down here, I would say it's a lower pri, lower priority.
Could maybe put it on the back.
And we could come back, yeah, we could usually come back in March, yeah.
We'd do that in the March meeting.
Speaking on, oh, actually, um I'm just going to skip forward just one sec because the service level agreements. Um Calvin, is this still due to come to us in January, is that what the timeframe is, that's still?
Yeah, absolutely, but obviously you you have, I mean, my involvement in the grants.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is feedback on, so, yeah, it will, it would need to to hit the um February.
For the budget.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so that's a, that's a nice.
I wonder if you could be good enough to explain something to me about the service level in the grants business. As I understand it, Surrey have withdrawn three sources of funding to 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 Waverley. One was the meals and wheels which you've dealt with, we can put that to one side, that seems to have been dealt with very well. Secondly, there's actual sheltered housing, but that's not really the part of this, that's a different issue. But they were also providing something like forty-five thousand to match the forty-five thousand that Waverley were granting to volunteer organisations. And they've withdrawn that and we set up a small subgroup of this group to be involved in the discussions about how that should, how they're going to deal with that. But in prior, in the meeting prior, Alex was saying, I think Liz was saying, there's another much larger fund that Waverley. Grants to voluntary organisations, is that correct?
Yes, that's the service level.
And that, that's some of that quarter, three quarters of a million.
Three quarters of a million is, I think, the total, all the support we provide.
But I include the Surrey.
Yeah, yes, that's four of them, not the Surrey, not the Surrey element.
We sometimes provide support by um giving people premises, which we don't charge them the full rental for. Or we give them reductions in their non-domestic rates. And so there's lots of different ways, other than grant funding, that we support voluntary organisations and that comes up to about three quarters of a million.
Okay.
But you are right, a large amount of money that the council has continued to fund year on year is through service level agreements. And they, I think, every three years, and this year is when they're all being renewed.
Okay.
So that's happening in paradox.
Okay, so the money's not as bad as I thought.
No.
I thought we were losing a much higher proportion, we're only really using the Surrey. And it's Waverley intending to continue as far as possible.
Yes.
Doing, doing what they've always done.
Yes, and I think what we, um what councillors agree was to um maintain our sort of forty-five thousand that was matched by Surrey and we put that. Into this, into this.
Okay, that's great, well, it's not great, but it's better than I thought.
Hey, obviously, we are getting, not that this matters to this, but Surrey are also cutting grants to our highway verges cutting as well.
I know.
So there's, there's cuts there, so it's happening quite a lot.
It's happening everywhere, really.
Yeah, quite a lot, different areas.
Yeah, but what they claim is that they're not getting the money from the government, that's what's saying, every time you talk to Surrey about that. We've got no choice, we're not getting, the government's taking the money away from us. So I've spoken to Jeremy Hunter for that. That's the best we can, the best I can do, complain to them, okay, sorry, Alex, back to you.
Okay, I'm not going to dwell too much on performance and service problems because we can pick up at the agenda planning meeting. Um do members want to look at the Waverley Training Services business plan suggested by your staff? So yeah, so that would make four items, which is quite chunky, unless any members want to add any other items that they feel should be on the agenda for January or in the future.
Well, I think we were just talking about um. Health, uh and, yeah, talking about health security and mental health. It's um, I don't know, Mr. Chair, I think we need to put something in to do with health, I don't know what we can choose there, but I do, I do think we need to.
I mean, when I put this programme together and kind of go through it, probably about fifty percent is probably to do with health, mental health. Grants is, you know, it's not statutory responsibility, but as we've seen for this review and explained earlier on tonight, that so much of what we do has come to an impact on it.
Mr. Chairman, would it be advisable to have another update on our review at that point?
I think we should do that, we should totally do that.
Generally, that's what we should have made, probably, this White's morning.
We'll give an update on that exercise, it's good.
If if members want, we can kind of produce some, um should say, observations from what we've found. To give members and officers a bit of an idea of where the review is probably going to be headed.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um the next thing, are there any recommendations that we should make?
As long as I have to evolve with this.
The the next item, I must say, has to be this exempt item, I mean, we all believe in being growth as possible, but unfortunately, there are some things that we just have no choice. With contractual, financial matters potentially involved, we have to keep this in the interests of the council, in the interest of the public part of it, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay, no worries.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for coming.
I hope you find it of some interest. Thank you. And just to turn the the video.